If I could ask everybody to find their seats so we can resume in a few minutes. Thank you. Okay, we will go ahead and reconvene with our next speaker, who I hope is here. Yes, come on up.
Secretary Ross, distinguished panelists, thank you for the opportunity to assist the administration in the 232 investigation on the North American aluminum industry. My name is Henry Gordnier, and I’m the chief executive officer of Tri-Aeros Aluminum. Tri-Aeros is a downstream producer of rolled aluminum sheet serving the North America beverage container and automotive markets. We are a member of the Aluminum Association. It’s our belief that a healthy North American aluminum industry is vital to national security. Our manufacturing operations is in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, where we employ over 1,200 employees at the Logan Aluminum Rolling Mill, a production joint venture with Novellus Corporation. The Commonwealth of Kentucky has more than 150 aluminum facilities, from mills to makers of end-user products, and the industry employs nearly 18,000 full-time workers. Aluminum accounts for $2 billion in the state’s gross domestic product. Since 2014, Tri-Aeros has invested approximately $425 million in our manufacturing facility, creating 250 high-skilled manufacturing jobs. These investments will increase our capacity by approximately 30% and expand our manufacturing capabilities to serve a wider range of products in the North American market. Notably, these investments protect the capacity needed to serve our existing customer base and support the developing automotive sheet market. At the outset, I would like to emphasize that Tri-Aeros supports fair and free competition, where this competition is based on cost, efficiency, and productivity. Based on these measures, the Logan Rolling Mill is regarded as one of the most productive mills in the world, yielding a low-cost position in the marketplace. But we cannot compete on government subsidies. Direct intervention of capital, labor, land, raw material, and basic inputs has led to massive overcapacity in Chinese aluminum assets upstream and downstream. With the Chinese overcapacity, we believe both our current business, as well as future investments and job expansions, are at risk. Today, imports of our core products are relatively small; however, they are growing at approximately 30% per year, and we have seen forecasts that show China targeting over 75% of the West Coast market. Recently, Tri-Aeros has been displaced from West Coast plants in favor of Chinese metal. Metal costs for the Chinese manufacturers are not the same as in other market-based countries. Chinese metal is advantaged over domestic supply due to subsidized smelters, unique metal index the Shanghai Foreign Exchange, which typically trades at lower levels than the LME, and export policies and tariffs which favor the export of value-added materials over primary aluminum. Due to these advantages, Chinese mills can offer fabricated products for import at extremely low prices, prices that are so aggressive no Western mill would be able to generate a profit. I can present two recent examples that illustrate where subsidized Chinese imports are impacting the North American aluminum economy today. These examples show that the threat of harm is shifting from conceptual to transactional. First, in a recent multi-year North American contract discussion, Chinese price points were used to anchor the negotiation as a global reference point. Leveraged in this manner, the economic impact of these imports is far greater than the actual volume shipped would indicate. Second, semi-fabricated products from China are being offered today at prices below the exchange-based price for metal in the U.S., with the intent for these products to be repurposed as raw material. If semi-fabricated product can be sold in North America below the base price for aluminum, it’s not a leap to see where this level of discount might be applied to more highly engineered products. In conclusion, Tri-Aeros seeks a level playing field in which to compete with all market participants. As the administration considers potential trade remedies, we believe that the unintended consequences can be minimized through recognizing the following. One, the North American aluminum industry is part of and dependent on a global supply chain, where the vast majority of our trading partners operate on market-based principles. Two, the full aluminum value chain should be considered, given the ability for policy to redirect shift values between upstream and downstream products. And three, the threat to the North American aluminum industry stems from Chinese overcapacity and non-market-based trading principles. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chinese overcapacity, I think, has, of course, been in existence for some time, so it’s interesting that Tri-Aeros did a substantial investment since 2014, sort of notwithstanding that. Could you explain a little bit of the rationale that led to that?
Well, there is growth in the North American automotive sheet market. So, you know, our approach has been, how can we grow our business, participate in growth in the North American automotive market, but at the same time sustain what our core products have been and our core customer base? So, I mean, it was a targeted decision to figure out what kind of investments that we could make that would allow us to sustain what’s been a very healthy North America trading partnership and commercial relationships today, balance that with how we could begin to grow in the automotive. So, it’s really been how do we have a sustained, how do we be a sustained North America provider to both markets?
Thank you. Other questions from the panel? Thank you.
Thank you.
We’re ready for our next speaker.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at this very important hearing. My name is Heidi Brock, and I’m president and CEO of the Aluminum Association. The Association represents the aluminum value chain. Our membership consists of large global companies, as well as small companies with a domestic or local focus. We represent primary producers of aluminum, producers of semi-fabricated products, and aluminum recyclers, as well as industry suppliers. The U.S. aluminum industry supports nearly 713,000 direct, indirect, and induced jobs, as well as $186 billion in economic output, more than 1% of U.S. gross domestic product. We are proud of the fact that this industry has committed to invest more than $2.3 billion in domestic plant expansions in the United States since 2013. Regarding the question of whether imports threaten U.S. national security, we see three reasons why it is important to look at aluminum as a strategic material and the aluminum industry as highly significant in its industrial contribution to national security. First, aluminum is used in numerous national defense applications, including major components of Army ground vehicles, jets flown by the Air Force, and warships deployed by the Navy. Aluminum is in the most conflict-ridden hotspots on the globe, keeping America’s servicemen and women safe. This speaks to the versatility of the metal. Aluminum is lightweight, corrosion-resistant, easily formed, highly conductive, non-toxic, and durable. And aluminum as a base metal can be combined with other materials to create and repurpose alloys for a wide variety of products. For example, in 1954, there were 75 unique aluminum alloys registered at the Aluminum Association. Today, there are more than 540 active alloys that exist for different applications. For example, the Army uses high-strength blast-resistant aluminum in its vehicles. For the Humvees and Bradley Fighting Vehicles, aluminum reduces weight, resists rust, and stands up under tough conditions. Second, aluminum is a critically important material for the nation’s infrastructure. Aluminum products are essential for energy generation and transmission, satellite communication, and the construction of bridges and buildings, as well as for machinery and equipment that build and maintain that infrastructure. And third, aluminum manufacturing and the products made from aluminum support significant economic activity, activity that contributes to the well-being of Americans and fosters problem-solving innovations in packaging, jet planes, wind turbines, trucks and cars, electronics, among many other things. Having an economically healthy U.S. aluminum industry is vital for the manufacturing and defense industrial base of the United States. As an industry, we have a unified position on a set of principles that we recommend be considered in the current investigation and any recommendations that might emerge from it. First, we respectfully ask that any trade remedy should specifically address Chinese overcapacity and its effects. Second, we also ask that trade remedies not impact current trading relationships between the U.S. and critical trading partner countries, which have been determined by the Department of Commerce to be operating as market economies, especially Canada and the European Union. And finally, we ask that trade remedies consider the entire aluminum value chain, including both primary and downstream U.S. producers and their employees. I mentioned at the outset that the U.S. aluminum industry is united in recognizing Chinese overcapacity as the fundamental trade issue hurting the domestic industry today. As an association, we’re working with different government agencies to address this acute and persistent problem. We’ve supported efforts by the U.S. Trade Representative to pursue bilateral discussions to raise aluminum overcapacity in China as an issue. We’ve raised our concerns about Chinese misclassification of fake semis to U.S. Customs and Border Protection, and we’ve worked with colleagues in Canada, the EU, and other countries similarly affected by Chinese overcapacity. Ultimately, our view is that the best solution for the U.S. aluminum industry and the jobs it supports would be a negotiated government-to-government agreement with China that results in measurable reductions in Chinese aluminum capacity. That would address the problem directly and set the U.S. industry both upstream and downstream on a course of expansion rather than contraction, creating more jobs and more opportunities. I’d like to thank Secretary Ross for this investigation. Our Association stands ready to assist in any way possible.
Thank you. Any questions from the panel? Thank you so much. We’re ready for our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Ben Cars, and I’m senior vice president for Strategy, Technology, and Corporate Development for ALCOA. On behalf of ALCOA, an Aluminum Association member, we welcome the Department of Commerce for Section 232 Investigation on the Effect of Aluminum Imports on U.S. National Security and to Consider Actions That Will Address Unfair Trade. ALCOA pioneered the modern aluminum industry in 1888 and has been a global leader for nearly 130 years. Today, the ALCOA is focused primarily on the upstream sector of the aluminum industry, where we mine bauxite, refine it into aluminum, and smelt it into aluminum. In the U.S., we have five operating locations, including two smelters and one rolling mill, with three other production facilities currently curtailed. ALCOA represents 47% of all U.S. aluminum smelting capacity. Aluminum is a vital component in defense applications, including armored vehicles and fighter jets, and while we believe that there is the ability to produce enough high-purity aluminum in the U.S. for defense applications, we see a risk for national security if there is not ample access to primary aluminum in North America or from other U.S. defense partners. In recent years, that supply has been threatened primarily due to one reason, the oversupply of aluminum being produced in China. ALCOA seeks to compete on a level playing field. We believe that if the United States wants to ensure an ample supply of primary aluminum to help protect national security, three steps should be taken. Number one, address overcapacity of aluminum in China. Two, protect the U.S. aluminum industry’s integrated critical supply chain. And three, provide a competitive environment for the U.S. aluminum industry, including regulatory reform, affordable energy, and critical investment. In 2000, China produced only 10% of the global supply of primary aluminum. Today, it’s about 55%. From 2000 until the global financial crisis, China increased its production year over year, while at the same time its economy was growing at a record pace. China was essentially consuming all the aluminum they were producing. As China’s economy began to slow, however, domestic Chinese capacity began to outpace its ability to absorb all its production. This year, China’s overcapacity is estimated to reach new heights, with a surplus more than 2 million metric tons. That’s just slightly below ALCOA’s total global smelting operating capacity and nearly half of all North American production in 2016. In total, Chinese domestic consumers consume roughly 30 million metric tons of primary aluminum annually. When compared to the 2 million metric tons of excess primary production, 4 million metric tons of net semi-fabricated products, and 9 million metric tons of curtailed capacity, Chinese current overcapacity is 15 million metric tons per year, or 50% of China’s own consumption. This is equivalent to the total direct supply from North America, South America, Europe, and the Middle East combined. We believe China is exporting its domestic problems. China unfairly subsidizes smelters to maintain employment and keep smelters online when they should be curtailed. And while China’s government has committed to reducing production, there is a lack of credible data and transparency to show what actions have been taken. We believe that unfair subsidies for Chinese smelters persist, possibly in the form of tax breaks, loans, or lack of enforcement on policies already on books. The result has been a significant curtailing or shuttering of aluminum smelting capacity outside of China, with no greenfield investment in the U.S. Because of overproduction in China, aluminum prices never fully recovered from the global financial crisis and remain 25% to 30% lower than before the crisis. And the overcapacity has tremendous impact on the number of aluminum plants operating and jobs here in the U.S. ALCOA has closed, curtailed, or divested 43% of its smelting capacity and 35% of its refining capacity since 2007, and in the U.S., this has impacted more than 1,500 jobs in New York, Washington, Indiana, and Texas in just the last couple of years. As such, the U.S. government should directly engage with the Chinese government to address the ongoing overcapacity problem in the aluminum industry and to ensure that Chinese overproduction no longer spills out into the rest of the world. Outside of China, the aluminum industry has an integrated supply chain essential to the health of the entire aluminum value chain. Unencumbered trade flows between our vital trading partners, including Canada and Europe, are critical to the success of the U.S. aluminum industry. ALCOA’s smelters in Canada export 60% of the metal to the U.S., serving customers in 25 states and supporting our economy through downstream jobs. We need to protect vital supply chains and 160,000 jobs that depend on them. Indeed, maintaining a diverse supply chain among longstanding allies and vital trading partners bolsters our national security. Providing a favorable business environment that allows our operations in the U.S. to compete globally is also essential to the long-term viability of the U.S. primary industry. We must have efficient regulatory policies, competitive energy prices, and an environment that allows our plants to compete fairly. In addition, our production facilities would benefit from investment in innovative technologies in the form of a public-private partnership to advance our smelting industry to the next generation. With investment in R&amp;D and the commercialization of technological breakthroughs, we can ensure the competitiveness of existing smelters and secure jobs in the U.S. In conclusion, ALCOA greatly appreciates the U.S. government’s sustained commitment to addressing the challenges facing our industry. We look forward to the findings in Section 232 and remain committed to continued engagement on these critical issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you so much. We’re ready for our next speaker.
Good morning. I’m Dan Langer with PHP Incorporated. Thank you for the opportunity to appear on behalf of PHP Incorporated with facilities in Fairview and Erie, Pennsylvania. Our company was founded in 1906. PHP Incorporated is a U.S.-based supplier of aluminum and zinc die castings, CNC die casting machining, molds, and tooling. We ask that the department consider the impact its decision will have on the entire supply chain, particularly American defense suppliers using aluminum. An ITAR-registered company, PHP has over 500 skilled employees in Northwest Pennsylvania, manufacturing castings for some of the largest corporations in the United States. Our employees make critical products for the defense, automotive, appliance, and lighting industry, among others. Last year alone, we produced more than 15 million castings and poured nearly 50 million pounds of alloy. With over 100 years of aluminum die casting experience, our company is one of the global leaders in aluminum casting. We typically use aluminum alloys 360, 380, 383, and 413. We also use zinc aluminum alloys, ZA8, ZA12, and ZA27, along with number three zinc alloy. As a supplier to the U.S. military, we manufacture military radial castings used by all branches of the U.S. military and special operations around the world. Aluminum consumers like PHP in Pennsylvania are critical to national security. Not only are we the customers setting the demand, but we are the U.S. suppliers helping meet the needs of our warfighters. PHP is a critical part of the defense industry’s supply chain, and any disruptions in our raw material can send a ripple effect throughout the military. In fact, we are already facing significant challenges ourselves from imports of aluminum castings from India. I know Washington focused much of its attention on excess Chinese aluminum, and rightfully so. I encourage the department to look at imports and downstream products from around the globe. Having a strong and growing domestic aluminum supply is critical not only to national security but also to economic growth. While PHP does not import any aluminum directly, we do purchase globally-produced secondary aluminum through our domestic suppliers. We are very concerned that restricting imports or placing tariffs on aluminum will simply lead to more castings coming into the U.S. with foreign aluminum all duty-free. Shifting the injury to another part of the defense supply chain will not help U.S. aluminum producers, but cause all of us to lose. We strongly urge the department to not only look at the impact of imported aluminum on national security, but also on products primarily manufactured from aluminum. Downstream suppliers like us are often family, small businesses, and we already face a number of challenges. Our company continues to grow to meet the needs of our defense and other customers, but we are very concerned about an increase of import castings and other aluminum-containing products from India, China, and elsewhere. We ask the department to take a broader look at the aluminum marketplace and not take action that will shift the injury to our industry by giving imported castings with cheap aluminum a free pass. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Are there particular types of aluminum castings from India that you’re seeing coming into the United States?
Yes, automotive-related castings and appliance-related castings is our largest competition.
Thank you. Questions from the rest of the panel? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
We’re ready for our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Cosentino. I’m vice president for Government Affairs and Defense for Arconic. We value the administration’s engagement with our industry and appreciate the opportunity to participate in today’s 232 hearing. We submit that a healthy U.S. aluminum industry enhances our national security and that solutions identified during this investigation support all segments of the value chain, including mid and downstream. Arconic is a lightweight metals manufacturer who works with our customers to solve complex engineering challenges, transforming the way we fly, drive, build, and power. Our businesses have helped shape the aerospace, defense, automotive, and building industries since the days of the Wright Brothers and Henry Ford. Today, we continue to advance cutting-edge technologies, from metal powders optimized for additive manufacturing to next-generation automotive alloys that are significantly more formidable and stronger than those in use today. Arconic is tremendously proud of our 22,750 employees in the United States. Since 2009, we have invested more than $3 billion to modernize our U.S. facilities, adding more than 2,600 high-quality advanced manufacturing jobs. We are an active and longstanding member of the U.S. Aluminum Association. Arconic is proud to serve as a leading aluminum products supplier to Department of Defense programs, providing engineered solutions that increase survivability, reduce weight, and enhance performance across air, land, and sea platforms. Today, Arconic aluminum rolls, flies, and sails on over 80 major defense programs of record. Our defense solutions are produced across 45 plants in the United States. Armor plate manufactured at Davenport, Iowa can be found on nearly every new U.S. combat and tactical vehicle program of record. Single-piece aluminum bulkheads forged in Cleveland form the backbone of the F-35 Joint Strike Fighter. The demand for aluminum on critical U.S. military platforms is expected to grow significantly over the next five years, driven by the planned ramp of programs like the JSF and the Joint Like Tactical Vehicle. Demand for cold-rolled aluminum alone for armor plate and marine applications is expected to triple by 2021. We have long collaborated on research and development with the U.S. Army, Air Force, Navy, and Marine Corps on alloys and manufacturing processes. For example, we work with the U.S. Air Force to develop next-generation propulsion and airframe structural components through the Metals Affordability Initiative. This is a consortium dedicated to leveraging government and industry resources to reduce costs and lead time associated with producing metallic aircraft components. Arconic has a long history of manufacturing partnerships with the DOD, including those that helped build the world’s widest aluminum rolling mill in Davenport, Iowa, and the 50-kiloton press in Cleveland, which produces some of the largest close-eyed forgings in the world. Through these investments, we help ensure robust industrial capacity, supporting military readiness, and enhancing the country’s technological edge in manufacturing. Arconic has continued to invest in these assets over the years, including a recent $100-million upgrade to the Cleveland Forge and nearly $500 million in investment at Davenport. Arconic’s defense portfolio is overwhelmingly a commercial item. This means we leverage the best of our innovation developed for commercial application to meet the unique needs of the warfighter. This means our defense products are manufactured across hundreds of commercial flow paths rather than on their own dedicated assets. To best maintain the health of our advanced aerospace and defense product lines, we rely on a strong backlog across our product portfolio to include business in automotive, industrial, and packaging. This allows us to optimize mix across our plants and produce our parts in the most efficient and cost-effective manner possible. Regarding high-purity aluminum, new defense platforms have requirements that call for higher purity aluminum than legacy programs, and we expect this trend to continue. Arconic invented a refining process that produces high-purity aluminum using fractional crystallization. This is in operation today at our plant in Davenport. Arconic aerospace and defense products account for the majority of total U.S. demand for high-purity aluminum. Our process is reliable, efficient, and produces the highest levels of purity. We currently produce a significant share of our own utilization, and this is an easily scalable process. Finally, U.S. mid and downstream producers rely on primary aluminum imports. The majority of these imports are Canadian in origin and produced at factories that are part of the U.S. defense industrial base. Action on primary aluminum imports would do little to address global overcapacity and potentially harm the U.S. defense industrial base by disrupting the integrated North American supply chain. In conclusion, we appreciate the administration’s engagement on a topic of great importance to our industry and the U.S. defense industrial base. We look forward to working with the team to ensure an outcome that supports U.S. competitiveness and enhances our national security. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We’re ready for our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is
My name is Billy Hughes, and I'm a proud veteran of the United States military. I've worked in the aluminum industry for the past ten years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about the importance of domestic aluminum production to national security and why Section 232 relief is necessary for our industry. I've been the Reduction Services Superintendent at Century Aluminum Hawesville in Kentucky for the past two years. In this role, I administer activities of the potlines as well as cell relining. I'm on the floor day in and day out to ensure that we produce the highest aluminum production possible. Prior to this position, I worked at Alcoa in Warwick for eight years. I was a supervisor there, and I was also hourly as a process control operator. I left there in 2015, just before the shutdown. For the past ten years, aluminum has been a big part of my life and lives of my friends and family. I'm grateful for my job at Hawesville, and I'm lucky here the most to still have a job in this industry. However, I'm concerned without much need of relief, this will not be the case much longer. What was once a thriving industry has all but disappeared. In my time in the industry, I saw conditions deteriorated as China expanded production and crash prices. As just one example, in the industry, our burn bonuses are often faced on the company's performance. This means that as the market started to get bad, so did our bonuses. Sometimes there were none. Today, I feel fortunate to work at Hawesville, the last remaining U.S. smelter that can make high-purity aluminum. However, even this facility is at risk. Over the past five years, Hawesville has issued two separate notices that would permanently shut down operations in sixty days. Lucky for us, on both occasions, the smelter was able to pull its business back from the brink, but not without layoffs. In the past two years alone, the facility has been forced to let hundreds of workers go and has been scrapping unused machinery for cash to help us get by. Hawesville could easily become the next aluminum smelter to go under unless relief is granted. I would stress that the production of high-purity aluminum requires highly technical skills that are not easily replaceable. The high-purity production process is complex and leaves no room for error. This process is part art and part science. Even the slightest amount of impurities can throw the entire pot off. When these jobs go, so do the specialized skills needed to produce the high-purity aluminum. The domestic industry's problems have taken its toll on its workers and families. Many who have lost their jobs remain unemployed to this day. Not a week has gone by where I don't receive a phone call from a former colleague looking for work. Our communities have also suffered. Like Hawesville, smelters are typically located in small, family-friendly towns. When their largest employer is forced to shut down and reduce jobs, the whole town feels it. As a veteran of the U.S. Army, I know firsthand how important aluminum is to the men and women that put their lives on the line for their country. I served in both OEF and OIF following September eleven. When I first arrived in Iraq, 2003, Humvees were no match for the IEDs. We were losing soldiers left and right because our vehicles had little protection from roadside bombs. At this time, members of my unit were forced to line our vehicles with scrap metal, sandbags, bulletproof vests for added protection. By the time my younger brother arrived in Iraq for 2008, conditions thankfully improved. The Army began using high-purity aluminum alloy in its vehicles, which is significantly more effective at absorbing a blast. Only one can imagine how many U.S. soldiers' lives were saved because of this switch. I fully agree with Secretary Ross that the primary and high-purity aluminum produced at Hawesville is usually an important thing to defense. My fear is that if we allow imports to continue entering the U.S. market and harming U.S. production and workers, the domestic aluminum industry will become a thing of the past, and our national security will suffer. It is critical that we maintain the capability to produce aluminum and not are forced to depend on unreliable and unsafe sources of supply to meet this need. I don't know how important aluminum is to protect—I know how important aluminum is protecting our soldiers and wouldn't want to depend on imports from the Middle East or somewhere else during a time of war or other national emergency. For these reasons, I ask that you grant immediate Section 232 relief for domestic aluminum industry. On behalf of myself, my colleagues, and friends and family, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for your comments. A similar question I had for Mr. Smith. Can you give us a sense of the amount of time needed to get the experience to have the people like you and people who work with you and for you to do that specialized work on the pots?
I can tell you that once a smelter goes, the people are gone too.
Sure.
People like me are going to be looking for jobs in different industries, and it's going to be hard to come back. It's not going to be an easy task to restart a potline, no matter where you go. It takes a lot of technical experience. You're looking for guys of, you know, ten to twenty to thirty years' experience to start these potlines.
Other questions from the panel? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready for our next speaker.
My name is Alf Barrios. I'm the Chief Executive of Rio Tinto Aluminum. I sit on the Rio Tinto Executive Committee and serve as the company's country sponsor for Canada and the United States. Rio Tinto appreciates this opportunity to offer comments to assist the Department of Commerce and Department of Defense in the Section 232 national security investigation of aluminum imports. Rio Tinto commends the Trump administration for focusing attention on the vital role that aluminum plays in defense capability. My comments today will highlight the essential nature of aluminum to the North American integrated supply chain that is the basis of that capability. Rio Tinto is a leading global mining and metals company that focuses on finding, mining, and processing essential mineral resources. We have been in business for more than a hundred and forty years, and some of our longest operating assets are located in the United States. One of our major products is aluminum, largely produced in North America. Rio Tinto is proud to have operations in the United States that have provided critical minerals to U.S. customers for over a hundred years. For example, a Bingham Canyon mine in Salt Lake City, Utah, is a fully integrated copper, gold, and molybdenum mine and smelter that has operated for a hundred and ten years and supplies over thirty percent of U.S. copper demand. Rio Tinto is also investing for the future, prioritizing mineral explorations in North America that will support future U.S. manufacturing demand. To date, Rio Tinto has invested over 1.3 billion to develop the Resolution Copper Mine in Arizona. This mine will require six to eight billion of investment over the next several years and is one of the largest private investment currently pending in the U.S. permitting process. Rio Tinto's operations, such as those in Utah, California, Arizona, are strong contributors to the United States economy and employment. In the primary aluminum sector, Rio Tinto is a significant contributor to the integrated manufacturing supply chain in North America as the largest producer of primary aluminum. Our smelters in Quebec and British Columbia have a long history of supply in the U.S. manufacturers, particularly customers in the defense sector. In regard to the national security focus of this hearing, the United States and Canada have treated each other as indispensable partners in national defense for nearly a century. The Canadian-American Defense Industrial Alliance, known as the Defense Production Sharing Program, predates the U.S. entry into the Second World War. In 1940, Canada and the United States established the Permanent Joint Board on Defense, which still operates today. The Hyde Park Declaration of 1941 allowed American-made war material to be produced in Canada and provided to Great Britain. Close defense coordination between the U.S. and Canada continues today. For over twenty years, U.S. law has defined the national technology and industrial base to include Canada. Canada was the only country to receive such treatment until Congress recently added Australia and the United Kingdom. This longstanding and deep cooperation between the United States and Canada has been recognized in prior Section 232 investigations. In a recent 232 investigation, the Department of Commerce recognized that, quote, "Canada is largely integrated with the United States in the defense arena and is considered part of the North American industrial base in defense planning." Rio Tinto is proud to play a critical role in supporting the U.S. manufacturing base. Seventy-five percent of Rio Tinto's Canadian aluminum production is shipped to the U.S., where we have sales in more than thirty-five states. Among many historical examples of Rio Tinto's operations in North America and their connection to the defense supply chain is our shipyard hydropower plant. This plant was built in 1943 with encouragement from both the U.S. and Canadian governments. The shipyard hydropower station and the aluminum smelting operations at Fed proved vital in the ramp-up of allied forces of allied defense manufacturing capability. Today, it is a key component of a hydroelectric power network which feeds the aluminum smelters that provide reliable aluminum supplies to North American customers. The United States has long considered Canada's resources and manufacturing capabilities to be a vital part of the North American defense industrial base. Consistent with U.S. law and policy, Rio Tinto has long been a proud partner to the U.S. government, private industry, and local communities. We look forward to continuing and deepening these relationships. Thank you for allowing me to participate today.
Thank you. Has Rio Tinto seen any impact in its Canadian operations from the Chinese oversupply?
When we have seen in the past some impact from the Canadian smelters from the Chinese oversupply, and I must say that the recent statements from the Chinese government do recognize the oversupply of aluminum sector and offer some hope. I believe that the best outcome always is a negotiated solution led by the U.S. with the Chinese. This will provide, we believe, a more sustainable, long-term solution which will give clarity and predictability for the industrial—future industrial investments in North America.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
We're ready for the next witness.
My name is Alison Keane, and I'm the President and CEO of the Flexible Packaging Association. Flexible packaging represents over thirty billion dollars in annual sales in the U.S., and it's the second-largest and fastest-growing segment of the packaging industry. The industry employs over eighty thousand workers in the United States. It's produced from paper, foil, plastic, film, or any combination of these materials. This includes bags, pouches, labels, liners, wraps, roll stocks, and other flexible products. With respect to aluminum foil, this packaging includes everyday food and beverage products such as Hershey Kisses, Pringles, Danone Yogurt, Capri Sun, as well as health and beauty items such as Tylenol, Clinique Plus, Gillette shaving—and Gillette shaving cream. Aluminum foil is used by the flexible packaging industry for medical device packaging as well to ensure that the products packaged, such as absorbable sutures, human tissues, and artificial joints, are maintained—maintain their efficacy and sterility at the time of use. This Section 232 investigation seeks to determine what, if any, effects imports of aluminum have on national security. FPA is not aware of any impacts aluminum foil imports for the use in the packaging industry has on national security. We support the efforts to protect domestic manufacturing and ensure national security, but believe any such efforts must consider the impact and consequences on all U.S. manufacturing sectors. Accordingly, the scope of these actions must be limited to address the specific objectives. Aluminum foil imports should be excluded from consideration without any application to national security. In its investigation, the administration is to consider a range of factors related to national security, including the economy, the effects of foreign competition on economic welfare, and impacts on employment. Any import restrictions, we believe, on aluminum foil will have a significant negative impact on the flexible packaging industry and its employment in the United States. This investigation is paralleling an International Trade Commission investigation of Chinese aluminum foil imports. The petition claims that dumped and subsidized aluminum foil from China is causing or threatening injury to the domestic aluminum foil industry. The ITC petition seeks steep import duties exceeding a hundred and forty percent. The unintended consequences of potential remedies under this investigation, combined with any imposed by the ITC, on the ability for flexible packaging manufacturers to get the aluminum necessary to create innovative and functional products for food, beverages, candy, and pharmaceuticals, would be the loss of flexible packaging manufacturing jobs in the United States. Aluminum foil is used by the flexible pack—aluminum foil that is used by the flexible packaging industry is simply not manufactured in the quality and quantities needed in the United States. Failure to invest and quality lapses, including gauge width and lack of appropriate alloys, contribute to the fact that U.S. producers of aluminum foil are not able to serve the U.S. flexible packaging industry. In fact, at the ITC's preliminary hearing on March 30th, the staff found that domestic ultra-thin foil production may be limited or nonexistent. The ITC also found that despite the Aluminum Association's arguments about economic harm by imports, domestic aluminum foil manufacturing jobs declined by only a hundred and thirty-seven workers from the period of 2014 to 16. To put this number in perspective again, the domestic flexible packaging manufacturing jobs in the United States are over eighty thousand. The negative impact on American jobs, cutting off the supply of aluminum foil for flexible packaging, will far outweigh any job benefits that are envisioned by the ITC or Section 232 investigations. High tariffs or quotas will only lead to U.S. companies sourcing aluminum foil from other non-U.S. manufacturers. Chinese suppliers have printed or otherwise converted aluminum foil entering the U.S. market since these products will not be part of the actions, and/or U.S. companies moving flexible foil manufacturing outside the United States altogether. There is simply no scenario where U.S. aluminum foil manufacturers benefit, and in most cases, U.S. flexible packaging jobs will be lost. FPA shares the same goal as domestic aluminum foil producers who want more American jobs. We understand the importance of national security. We believe that the administration should find ways to work together to improve our country's competitiveness. We believe that everybody loses in unfair trade cases, particularly the American consumer. The ITC's preliminary findings make it clear that their case is not going to result in any benefit to the aluminum foil producers, and the unintended consequences of including aluminum foil in any remedy under this investigation will be more damaging to the U.S. manufacturing industry and the economy than the benefits sought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Secretary Ross, and panel, for inviting me to speak today. My name is Robert Lotterbach, and I'm the Vice President of Global Sourcing at Ball Corporation. Today, I'm testifying on behalf of the Can Manufacturers Institute, CMI, whose member companies, including Ball Corporation, produce over ninety billion aluminum beverage cans every year, create eleven billion dollars in economic activity, and employ ten thousand individuals in twenty-three states. In order to make the products that we sell, we must purchase very large quantities of aluminum can sheet and aluminum ingot. The names of these products, along with their corresponding HTS codes, have been provided in our submissions. We respectfully request that Commerce exclude the aluminum products that we purchase from any upcoming trade action. To assist Commerce in your analysis, we offer the following reasons. Number one, the aluminum products that we purchase do not have any defense applications. Number two, the aluminum can sheet producers have been and continue to shift their production away from aluminum can sheet that we purchase to higher-margin, higher-value-added products, such as those used by the automobile industries. As such, can buyers like us are forced to qualify other sources outside the U.S. This is blameless trade. Number three, even still, we purchase the vast majority of our can sheet from the U.S., or in the case of aluminum ingot, from longtime strategic allies such as Canada. In fact, only one, two, to two percent of the aluminum products that we import into the U.S. come from China. Consider, on the other hand, the products that are being imported from China into the U.S. in large quantities are lower value-added commodity products, such as aluminum foil for food, aluminum fin stock for the HVAC industry, and building and construction aluminum. Number four, imposing tariffs on the aluminum products that we purchase would have the unintended consequence of harming U.S. can-based manufacturers while benefiting foreign can sheet companies doing business in the U.S. Let me explain. Three of the four major suppliers of aluminum can sheet in the U.S. are foreign-owned: Novellus, Constellium, and Trieros. We heard from them earlier. Tariffs will raise their prices, increase their profits, but will not have—but will not make the U.S. aluminum industry any stronger. Number five, bauxite, the most important ore of aluminum, is not mined in the U.S. And because of high energy costs and low concentrations of bauxite in U.S. soil, it will not be mined in the U.S., even with a tariff on imported aluminum. Number six, the importation of bauxite, alumina, and aluminum products we purchase is properly characterized as blameless trade, and it would be unfair to punish U.S.-based companies who depend on such blameless trade. So we ask, why the decline in U.S. primary aluminum production? It really boils down to three major reasons. High U.S. energy prices relative to other regions, lack of investments in U.S. smelting assets, and an exponential increase in domestic aluminum scrap availability, making the need for primary aluminum less. Number seven, trade action proposed would likely result in the loss of high-paying Number seven, trade action proposed would likely result in the loss of high-paying can manufacturing jobs and compromise the competitiveness of U.S. downstream aluminum users. Number eight, trade remedies would have the chilling effect of investments on our industry. Over the last five years alone, CMI companies have invested well over $1 billion in their U.S. manufacturing facilities. Even small tariffs will result in greater uncertainty about prices, supply, financing, and would dramatically curtail investment in hiring in the U.S. And number nine, finally, a tariff on aluminum products would have a twofold impact. First, consumers would pay more, ultimately harming the U.S. consumers that rely on affordable canned products. And second, our products would be unfairly taxed, making cans less competitive when compared to competing packaging substrates such as plastic and glass. With these concerns in mind, we respectfully request that Commerce exempt the aluminum products that we purchase from any tariff or trade remedy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Questions? Thank you. We're ready for our next speaker.
My name is Jim McGreevy. I'm the President and CEO of the Beer Institute. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the U.S. beer industry's views on the department's investigation. I speak on behalf of the beer, of the beer industry, which represents 1.9% of the nation's gross domestic product, and the direct, indirect, and induced jobs of 2.23 million Americans. The Brewers Association and the American Beverage Association join us in our written comments. A majority of the volume of beer sold in the U.S. is packaged in aluminum cans and aluminum bottles made from aluminum can sheet. While 98% of our can sheet is domestic, imported primary aluminum is an essential input. Tariffs or other measures limiting the importation of primary aluminum or can sheet will hurt our economic activities and the jobs our industry supports. Imports of primary aluminum for can sheet manufacturing do not threaten U.S. national security. U.S. smelters and reliable U.S. trading partners can satisfy the military's demand. The competitive challenges U.S. smelters face are the result of factors unrelated to imports: aging facilities, high energy costs, and a strong U.S. dollar. We urge the Secretary not to impose any tariffs or restrictions on imported can sheet, primary aluminum, or ingot. The Department has trade remedy tools that it can use in a targeted manner to address unfair trade practices, as it did in its recent scope determination concerning Chinese aluminum pallets and its recently initiated investigation of aluminum foil imports from China. We urge the Secretary to recommend the continued use of such targeted actions, consistent with U.S. trade remedy laws and regulations and with our international commitments. We also urge the Secretary to consider that energy costs are a key factor driving smelter competitiveness. The U.S. producers are at a severe energy cost disadvantage relative to their foreign competitors. Lower energy costs help smelters and may encourage investment in the U.S. rather than in other countries. Today, I would like to speak to another issue that should be part of the department's inquiry and is of great concern to the beer industry: serious irregularities in the trading of primary aluminum contracts and in the storage of aluminum at warehouses approved by the London Metals Exchange. These irregularities seriously distorted the aluminum market and cost aluminum users billions of dollars. Aluminum producers themselves have some responsibility for current market conditions by taking incentives from London Metal Exchange warehouse owners to funnel aluminum away from the market. Today, U.S. producers have taken production offshore by investing in building smelters to reduce their cost of production here in the U.S. at the expense of American jobs. In November 2014, the Senate Permanent Subcommittee on Investigations issued a report that found, quote, "troubling issues involving conflicts of interest, market distortions, and the potential to gain unfair trading advantages," which likely added billions of dollars in costs to a wide range of aluminum users, from beer makers to car manufacturers to defense companies that make warships for the Navy. Though the London Metal Exchange enacted reforms that resulted in significant market corrections, irregularities and distortions of the market may not be over. We've recently seen price movements that appear disconnected from market fundamentals. There are two reasons I raise this. First, as the Secretary considers whether to recommend import adjustments, keep in mind the negative impact that restrictions on supply of primary aluminum will have on our industry and that of other aluminum users. We just exited a period when artificial restrictions in the market distorted prices and hurt aluminum users. Import restrictions would likely have the same effect, leading to higher costs and in turn, lost sales. Second, high aluminum prices coupled with a strong U.S. dollar make the U.S. market attractive to global aluminum suppliers, incentivizing additional imports. If the concern is imports of primary aluminum, it is critical to evaluate the role aluminum price irregularities and distortions played in creating the current situation. While imports of primary aluminum for can sheet do not threaten U.S. national security, there are actions the Secretary should recommend to the President to facilitate a functioning aluminum market. One, further scrutiny of aluminum price irregularities and distortions, policy changes focused on lowering energy costs for smelters, and three, no restrictions on can sheet or its imports. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Thank you.
Members of the panel, I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Matt Abud, and I am the President of Hydroaluminum Metals USA with offices in Baltimore, Maryland. Hydro is a global aluminum company with production, sales, and trading activities throughout the value chain, from bauxite to alumina, energy consumption, energy, excuse me, energy generation, to the production of primary aluminum and rolled products, as well as recycling. Headquartered in Norway, the company has 13,000 employees involved in activities in more than 40 countries. In the U.S., Hydro is a supplier of rolled aluminum and other metal products. The company has two dedicated aluminum remelting facilities in Henderson, Kentucky, and Commerce, Texas. In addition, we operate a technology center in Zeeland, Michigan, where we are conducting research to find and improve advanced solutions for aluminum and our end markets. Hydro has serious concerns regarding the distortion of trade flows resulting from overcapacities in the aluminum market caused by state interventions. Therefore, we welcome all evidence-based inquiries into the current situation faced by the aluminum industry. We agree that the crisis caused by overcapacity requires decisive government reaction. However, we are concerned that the potential trade remedies resulting from a 232 investigation, namely duties, tariffs, and quotas, do not effectively address the fundamental cause of today's situation, which is overcapacity in the primary aluminum industry stemming from practices which are not compliant with international trade law. This, coupled with the fact that the U.S. is a deficit market and rely on imports to supply the annual demand for primary aluminum, we urge the Department great caution. Many in this room would agree that the tools afforded to the President as a result of the 232 investigation are far from perfect or appropriate. Unfortunately, there is no substitute for free and fair trade based on a level playing field, and it is our opinion that we shouldn't try to distort the market back into compliance. That being said, we are all hopeful that if a trade remedy is chosen, there will be minimal unintended consequences for the integrated U.S. aluminum supply chain. The aluminum industries in Europe, the U.S., and Canada are interlinked, adding value to our societies as a whole and strengthening national security in the U.S. Tariffs or quotas imposed on European or Canadian aluminum would therefore be examples of such unintended consequences. Both Canada and Europe have been longstanding commercial and military partners of the U.S. and are characterized by strong market economies and legal systems. The Canadian and European aluminum industry stand in fair competition to each other and to their American counterparts, and they do not pursue any unfair trading practices. Therefore, we would like to kindly request the Department of Commerce to exclude Canadian and European imports from the scope of any potential trade remedies. We continue to believe that the best course for our industry is to continue working with our global trading partners and national trade associations to find a negotiated solution. The request in March of 2017 to the G20 countries from the aluminum associations of the U.S., Canada, and Europe to handle the overcapacity is one such forum. Another route is utilizing the WTO dispute settlement system, like the U.S.'s WTO complaint against the alleged Chinese subsidies to primary aluminum production launched on the 12th of January this year. The WTO dispute settlement mechanism is based on clearly defined and accepted rules and will not cause market distortions. While maybe not everyone in the room agrees that aluminum is a matter of national security, I think almost all would agree that a healthy and well-functioning aluminum industry is in our national best interest. As such, we in the U.S. must stand together with our colleagues in government and those throughout the globe who play by the rules to ensure no further harm is done to our great industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Has Hydro seen any impact on any of its operations from the Chinese overcapacity?
The major impact that Hydro has seen has been through our downstream joint venture in Sapa Extrusions. Sapa Extrusions is the world's largest extrusion company, and I believe you'll hear in just a moment from the head of the Aluminum Extruders Council, who can comment very directly on the impact that has happened in the overcapacities on the downstream side, but certainly there has been quite a bit of market distortion throughout the world.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to testify before the panel. My name is Garney Scott. I'm the President and CEO of Scepter, Inc. My company is primarily engaged in the recycled aluminum market. I'm here today in my capacity as Chairman of the Aluminum Association, a position I've been privileged to hold since October 2015. The Aluminum Association represents the entire value, entire aluminum value chain, from primary producers to recyclers to fabricators and their suppliers. Our members employ 161,000 workers and have manufacturing operations in 35 states, and account for 70% of the aluminum and aluminum products shipped in North America, creating $186 billion in economic activity. The domestic industry remains a leader in innovative aluminum technologies and applications, but it is at a juncture where it will either be able to take advantage of growth opportunities or will continue to be irreparably injured by unfair trade practices that undermine its ability to do so. Our industry has been hurt, and its future is threatened by global oversupply. More specifically, the U.S. industry is being harmed by massive Chinese overcapacity resulting from substantial subsidies by the government of China, such that China's capacity now far exceeds its domestic demand. China's huge and growing aluminum oversupply has distorted the world market and adversely impacted U.S. producers of both primary and downstream products. Chinese oversupply has put severe downward pressure on world prices, which in turn has resulted in the shuttering of U.S. aluminum smelters and semi-fabricating facilities. We have major concerns about China's rapid and aggressive expansion into value-added downstream products and their history of circumvention of U.S. duties through misclassification and/or transshipment, transshipment through third countries. To bring its production into line with domestic needs and not to export its oversupply, China needs to eliminate market distorting policies and close or idle at least 2 million metric tons of smelter and semi-finished product annual capacity. The trends in Chinese capacity, production, and exports have enormous negative impacts on the U.S. industry and have adversely affected the industry that is a vital component of our U.S. defense industrial base. In order for the U.S. aluminum industry to supply these defense needs and continue to provide, provide jobs in our communities, we need to be competitive and economically healthy. Absent actions that ensure robust and healthy commercial markets in the United States for aluminum and aluminum products, domestic producers will not be able to sustain their mills and facilities that also produce aluminum products that are vital for defense applications. Think of it this way: the North American aluminum producers ship about 26 billion pounds per year. Perhaps 1 to 1.5 billion pounds of this metal is shipped for defense applications, about 5%. There is no way to sustain a viable industry on these volumes alone, and no plant makes exclusively for military applications. So if we do not address the Chinese overcapacity issue, our entire commercial market may not be viable to the U.S. and will be completely at the mercy of global producers for its defense needs. The U.S. aluminum industry embraces competition that is fair and transparent. We believe that it is vital to the Chinese government to address the negative effects of the long-running rampant overcapacity in both the primary and downstream sectors by closing smelters and semi-fabricating mills until demand can meet supply. This includes, at a minimum, forcing inefficient, unpermitted, and antiquated facilities to close in China, and to pursue policies that align with its own stated sustainable development goals, and eliminate Chinese subsidies and Chinese lending and other incentives that artificially support the Chinese aluminum industry and its resulting pricing practices that negatively affect world markets through its exporting of aluminum. A 232 remedy should address the negative impacts of Chinese overcapacity in the United States and help protect an industry that is vital to the country's national and economic security. U.S. border measures will not fully address the problems we face because the domestic industry competes globally and has international supply chains. Unless a broader agreement is negotiated to reduce and eliminate the massive overcapacity in China, the negative effects will persist and continue to threaten the U.S. industry's long-term health and vibrancy. Thank you to the panel. We appreciate your focus on our industry.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Casey, Senior Director of Procurement for Bemis Company Incorporated. Bemis, a manufacturing of packaging headquartered in Nino, Wisconsin, believes it has a useful perspective to provide to the Secretary of Commerce and the Department of Commerce as they develop their analysis and recommendations for the President pursuant to the Section 232 national security investigation of aluminum imports. Bemis is concerned that potential measures resulting from the aluminum investigation could inadvertently have a negative impact on the supply of aluminum foil used in manufacturing flexible packaging in the United States, with potentially negative consequences for Bemis customers, competitive position, and employment. Any import restrictions on aluminum foil, and especially the ultra-thin foil used in flexible packaging, could negatively affect our business in the United States, given that, one, there is not adequate capacity in the United States and Canada to meet our quantitative and qualitative needs, and, two, our products compete with imported packaging that would not be covered by any measure impacting foil imports. Accordingly, Bemis respectfully submits that aluminum foil should be excluded from any eventual measures recommended to the President pursuant to the investigation of national security effects of aluminum imports. Bemis manufactures packaging for the largest food, consumer products, and medical device companies in the world. Though we are not a household name, our products are found in virtually every aisle of the grocery store. Our products keep the food you buy safe and fresh through distribution and keep patients safe during surgery. We have 59 facilities in 12 countries and about 17,500 employees worldwide. Within the United States, Bemis has 31 manufacturing plants in 14 states and almost 9,000 employees, 5,000 of those in Wisconsin. The states with the largest number of Bemis employees are Wisconsin, Indiana, Ohio, and Pennsylvania. As a core part of its packaging business, Bemis uses aluminum foil for barrier to protect the food and medical supplies that go into our packaging. Without aluminum foil, many food and medical products would be less safe and subject to higher waste through distribution. While Bemis sources a large percentage of its aluminum in the United States, there is only one domestic producer of converter foil, and that firm's entire capacity is not enough to supply Bemis annual requirements. In addition, a large portion of Bemis foil requirements are for ultra-thin foil of gauges less than .0003 inches thick. Such ultra-thin foil is used for applications like ketchup packages, cream cheese packaging, powdered food and beverages, and medical device packages. Bemis customers, such as Kraft Heinz, McCormick, and Beckton Dickinson, require this thin converter foil, but U.S. foil producers do not want or are unable to make gauges under triple-oh-three inches. As such, Bemis has been required to source this key material from offshore suppliers. Bemis operates in a highly domestic, highly competitive domestic Bemis, Bemis operates in a highly domestic, highly competitive domestic and international market. Many of Bemis aluminum foil-containing products compete with suppliers of packaging from outside the U.S. Increased prices or quotas for aluminum foil will open the door for imports of finished packaging, resulting in a loss of market share, profitability, and ultimately employment. Packaging foil is not made from military-grade, high-purity aluminum. We are not aware of any significant defense production needs for aluminum foil, packaging foil. The only military application we have identified for aluminum packaging foil is for meals ready to eat, or MREs. However, MREs are typically made with a thicker foil than Bemis uses, which can be easily sourced domestically. Finally, we understand the importance of protecting domestic manufacturers in key industries. To the extent that the Secretary and the Department are concerned about distortions in the aluminum foil market, we note the ongoing trade remedy proceedings before the Department of Commerce and the U.S. International Trade Commission provide an appropriate tool to address any needed corrections. Those proceedings entailing thorough, factual, market research and analysis are at a preliminary stage. Allowing the proceedings to run their course will allow consumers time to adjust. The present section, the present Section 232 investigation should not be used to restrict imports of aluminum foil for commercial uses, as the result would be grave economic consequences to the domestic manufacturing facilities of Bemis, other product, packaging producers, and our customers with no increase in defense security. Thank you. I'd be happy to take your questions.
Thank you. You did say that Bemis sources a large percentage of its aluminum in the United States, but the one supplier can't meet all the demands or the need, Bemis's needs, and then you go on to say, but a large portion of the ultra-thin foil is not available in the United States. Can you give us a sense of the proportion of those, those two categories?
Yes, so we, we source the vast majority of our foil that's over 0003 domestically. The foil that's under 0003, we have to import the, the majority of that because it's not available. And it's about 25 to 30% that's above 0003, and the balance would be below 0003.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Where do you import the thin? Where do you import the very thin, ultra-thin?
The ultra-thin, a significant portion does from, come from China. We can import from Europe as well as other Asian countries. As the trade remedy proceedings are taking place, we have been investigating alternate sources, and honestly, we are struggling to find enough capacity to meet all of our needs outside of China.
Thank you. Ready for the next speaker?
My name is Jorge Vasquez. I'm founder and managing director of Harbor Aluminum Intelligence. Harbor is an independent privately-owned research firm based in Austin, Texas, that specializes in the analysis of the global aluminum industry and its various markets. My testimony will be factual. Over 98% of the aluminum products the U.S. consumed in 2016 were produced here in the United States. By aluminum products, I mean mill products and castings. Actually, net U.S. imports of aluminum products have declined in the last 10 years, both in absolute and in relative terms. This explains why net exports of aluminum products to NAFTA partners have more than tripled in the last 10 years to 690,000 tons. In fact, the U.S. is a net exporter of Kenji to the world. Contrary to what many may imagine, the U.S. has had for many years an aluminum trade surplus with China. The U.S. exports more aluminum scrap units to China than the flat-rolled products the U.S. imports from China. Although this trade surplus still exists today, it has deteriorated in the last 10 years. U.S. military demand for aluminum products is more than 99% sourced from U.S. producers. In fact, domestic production is about 40 times larger than U.S. military aluminum demand volumes. With respect to high-purity aluminum, U.S. production is essentially three times larger than what the U.S. military consumes every year. Moreover, existing U.S. high-purity inventories can cover almost two years of U.S. military consumption. What if U.S. production of high-purity aluminum were ceased to exist? Well, the U.S. military could alone produce its entire needs using fractional crystallization technology, which is readily available in the U.S. and currently operates at commercial levels. Has China overproduced primary aluminum and caused U.S. smelters to close? Honestly, evidence doesn't support this notion. Consider these four facts: U.S. smelting production had already declined 40% by the time China's primary aluminum production and consumption started to take off in 2002. Average cash profit margins for smelters outside China have been higher in the last 12 years than in the prior 12 years, when China's primary aluminum production and consumption took off. China's total primary aluminum stocks today equate to approximately four weeks of consumption versus 30 weeks of consumption outside China, and China doesn't export primary aluminum. Please note that U.S. primary aluminum production has been declining since, since 1980. This is several decades before the Middle East and China became relevant primary aluminum producers. U.S. primary aluminum production has experienced an organic, long-term decline as a result of an exponential increase in domestic aluminum scrap availability, high electricity prices relative to other developing countries, lack of investment in smelting assets, and a long-term decline in aluminum consumption per capita. Moreover, this decline has been particularly driven in the last five years by a strong rally in the U.S. dollar, which appreciated around 20% over this period. It is technically clear to me that growing U.S. primary aluminum imports have been a natural economic effect of the gradual, long-term decline in uncompetitive U.S. primary aluminum production, not vice versa. Declining U.S. primary aluminum production is part of an organic maturity process where the U.S. economy and aluminum industry have moved away from low-value, energy-intensive, and less competitive industrial segments to more profitable and energy-efficient sectors, just like it has happened in other developed countries like Germany, Japan, and the UK. It is my technical view that exports of value-add U.S. aluminum products like Kenji, extrusions, and foil would decline in a significant way if the U.S. were to impose any type of restriction or duty on primary aluminum that ends up in impacting prices. Lastly, my analysis of physical transactions in the U.S. is leading me to believe that an artificial increase in the Midwest premium may have artificially attracted more primary aluminum imports than otherwise may have occurred. I can gladly share this analysis upon request. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the panel? Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, please.
My name is Charles Ketting. I'm the owner of Seco Metals in Fort Worth, Texas. Seco has been in business since 1983, and we make, manufacture aluminum pellet from primary aluminum only, which is used by major chemical companies and alloy metals. Seco produces aluminum products in purity grades up to 99.998% pure. The U.S. smelters can only produce purity as high as 99.98, which is 10% less. And that, that metal is not available to Seco from downstream produce, or, or downstream producers. In fact, Seco is the only approved supplier of high-purity aluminum used in the domestic manufacture of titanium alloys made for aerospace and military application. An average of 70% of our production is sold domestically, 9% is sold into China, and 20% into other foreign countries. We buy no aluminum from, from China, and they sell no primary aluminum into the U.S. Cost of aluminum production in the United States is higher than anywhere else in the world. This is primarily due to the cost of energy, which is 38% of the cost of total aluminum production. Aluminum can be produced in Canada for approximately 12 cents per pound less than in the United States because of lower power costs. Other countries have similar advantages over us. In the past, in the year 2000, there were 21 operating smelters in the U.S. Today, there are only five smelters owned by two companies, only two smelters of which are at capacity. The average of age of those smelters is 44 years versus less than 10 years for those in Asia and the Middle East. The U.S. smelters are operating with a distinct disadvantage because of their old facilities and higher cost of electricity. The U.S. has a large downstream aluminum industry, which is at least 10 times larger than the smelting industry, and which creates vastly greater number of jobs, and I belong to that. It will become less competitive and lose many more jobs than the smelters currently have with higher cost imposed by any tariff. Seco imports high-purity aluminum from over 10 suppliers across the globe. A tariff will affect the prices of material that cannot even be produced in the United States. The cost for aluminum supplier and customer contracts written in the U.S. is based on daily published indexes. Costs move up and down with the market. There has never been a tariff on primary aluminum in the U.S., and therefore, contracts do not anticipate tariffs. If a tariff is, is passed, it will cause havoc in the market. For instance, at Seco, we buy and sell on the same market. See the chart. Our contracts with our suppliers and customers allow for the price of aluminum to go up and down based on the, the indexes. This allows us to sign contracts as long as four years, since the rise and fall of the aluminum price is covered. We then add a fixed cost per pound to convert the aluminum to pellets. This conversion cost, cost, covers our direct cost as well as overhead and profit. If a tariff is imposed, Seco would have to pay it with no way to recoup it. We have no way in our contract to recoup a tariff. We would soon be bankrupt. Margins are small in this industry, and it, and tariffs could cause the failure of many companies such as Seco. In 2015, the U.S. military used only 42,000 metric tons of high-purity aluminum. The U.S. production capacity was 192,000 metric tons, of which 75,000 tons were idle. In addition, there were 75,000 metric tons of domestic inventory. This equates to 4.6 times the production capacity, with 1.8 times the inventory of military usage. In conclusion, why on earth do we need any type of tariff on high-purity primary aluminum? To protect two companies currently operating in the U.S. who have chosen to stay with outdated facilities in a country with extremely high energy cost, who have four times as much capacity as the military needs when we have 18, 1.8 years of inventory, when a tariff would create havoc in the downstream market, causing downstream producers to be less competitive, cause bankruptcies, and cause a higher loss of jobs than any, any tariff ports to protect? Why do we want to protect all of this when aluminum purities are available in many countries throughout the world? Will we no longer have allies such as Canada, the source of 63% of, of U.S. aluminum imports? Is our military, all at once, going to go to war with every country in the world that has aluminum producers? I don't think so. I am strongly opposed to any tariffs to adjust primary aluminum imports because such tariffs are totally and completely unnecessary.
Thank you for your testimony. The high purity that Seco produces, is that a result of Seco's processes, or is that really a result of the high purity primaried imports?
Is, is, I'm sorry, I don't hear very well. What did you say?
So, so you said that Seco produces the highest purity aluminum. U.S. companies don't produce that. You're importing aluminum as part of your process. Is, is the high purity that you're, Seco is producing as a result of what you're importing or a result of what Seco does with the imported?
It's both. We import the high purity aluminum that's not available in the United States. We can't get the high purity that we need from the United States, so we import it and then we convert it. And we, we also, we, it took us three years to develop a process that would, would keep the purity in that aluminum at its high level when it runs through every part of our plant without picking up any contaminants at all.
I see. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Last but not least, Mr. Henderson.
I am Jeff Henderson, President of the Aluminum Extruders Council, the AEC. The AEC has over 100 U.S. members that are manufacturers of aluminum extrusions. Our members and their suppliers employ over 35,000 workers directly and nearly 100,000 indirectly in hundreds of plants spread over 35 states. We applaud the administration's initiation of this investigation, as it recognizes the extreme importance of the U.S. aluminum industry and its workers to the national security of the United States. In this investigation, aluminum should be defined to include both primary aluminum and semi-fabricated aluminum items. Indeed, aluminum is produced on a continuum. At one end are the producers of primary or unrot aluminum, mainly in the form of ingot. Primary aluminum is intended almost exclusively for further processing into a semi-fabricated form, such as sheet, foil, plate, and extrusions, all of which fall on the other end of the production continuum. The threshold question in this investigation is whether aluminum is critical to U.S. national security. The answer is yes. Numerous finished products made with aluminum are critical to the U.S. defense industrial bases, which we will address in more detail in our written submission. Indeed, not only is a thriving aluminum industry critical to our nation's national security, certain foreign industrial policies pose a significant threat to the U.S. aluminum industry. This is particularly, particularly the case with China, and more recently, Malaysia and Vietnam. While aluminum's defense applications are extremely important, protecting that segment of the market alone is not sufficient on its own to ensure the continuation of a viable U.S. aluminum industry, which is ready to meet full wartime demand. Rather, the entire U.S. aluminum production continuum must be protected to prevent further weakening of this critical industry. So what is required to protect the U.S. aluminum industry? Well, first, you must understand the aluminum crisis. The crisis confronting the U.S. aluminum industry is China, plain and simple. As with other critical industrial sectors, China's aluminum strategy is to continue to build production capacity and employ tens of thousands of excess workers by artificially increasing aluminum output. China uses massive subsidies and other protectionist policies to accomplish these market-distorting objectives. Unless President Trump and this administration take decisive action and corrective action, the U.S. aluminum industry's ability to continue producing defense and other critical infrastructure items may be set back permanently or destroyed. The U.S. aluminum industry has paid the price for China's self-interested policies, as has our national security. Seven years ago, the AEC led the charge in bringing anti-dumping and countervailing duty cases against Chinese aluminum extrusions. Since imposition of the orders, however, the Chinese have worked overtime devising multiple transshipment and other evasion schemes multiple transshipment and other evasion schemes to avoid the duties. For example, the Chinese have greatly increased their exports of extrusions to Vietnam. Since 2011, these exports increased by almost 4,000%. During that same period, exports to the United States from Vietnam have increased by close to 8,000%. Similar trends are occurring in Malaysia and other Southeast Asian countries. China's practices have had a devastating impact on the U.S. aluminum industry, as they have fundamentally distorted the U.S. market. Let me highlight how the AEC believes that the administration should address the aluminum crisis. Key to our recommendations is that the administration must ensure that its actions do not reinforce or exacerbate the existing distortive Chinese policies. As such, the AEC does not support the imposition of tariffs or other restrictions on the import of primary aluminum, as that will simply support China's aluminum policy goals, especially since China does not even export primary aluminum. Imposing tariffs on primary aluminum would adversely impact the ability of U.S. semi-fabricated producers, including AEC's members and their customers, to compete against imports of their products from other countries, including China's transship semi-fabricated products. The administration should instead seek to restore the economic viability of the U.S. aluminum primary industry in a holistic fashion by addressing the underlying regulatory environment that has made the primary industry increasingly less competitive. To the extent the administration determines that tariffs or other restrictions on imports of primary aluminum are necessary, it should ensure that U.S. producers of semi-fabricated products, including extrusions, are not negatively impacted. Regarding extrusions, the administration should impose duties on aluminum extrusions from countries that are allowing China to evade the department's orders. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Thank you. Well, that concludes all of our scheduled speakers, so I want to thank the speakers for taking the time to come and give us their presentations, the panel members, and also those of you in the audience who have attended. Yeah, and remember, the comment period will remain open until tomorrow. So if there are some that have not yet submitted written comments for the record in this investigation, you have until tomorrow to do so. Thank you again, and the hearing is concluded.